First, the first item of video. Pledge allegiance to the flag and the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, well, we know there's a few of us. It's a 1951 edition to this pledge.
Right, we don't approve of.
We don't approve.
They didn't ask us.
Not the religious part, but just. The first, uh, first item is Chief Smith, he is not here yet. So we'll move to the second item, which is citizens' concerns. Do we have citizens' concerns tonight? Hearing no citizens' concerns, we will go down to the town manager's report.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Perhaps we'll do the first order of business is talk about the tax anticipation note. What we may need to do, we'll be seeing tax bills going out in your, uh, tonight. We'll be signing a warrant, not for tax bills, for sewer bills. But until those sewer bills come in, and then later until the tax bills come in, uh, this is the hardest time of the year for us to do cash flow. Karen's prepared a explanatory sheet here that's up on the screen, too. Really for the two to four weeks in November and beginning of December, that is until the tax money starts coming in, uh, we may need to borrow. Uh, we currently have 670,000, um, with 600 due for the school payment payroll accounts payable, uh, leaving about 70,000, uh, November 21st, we have another school payment payroll accounts for the second run of that month. Sewer payments will be coming in, but every, every other week, uh, we have the payroll and payables of about 600,000, uh, which includes the 440,000 dollars for the school. So, uh, what we're asking for, uh, board to approve is, uh, for me to authorize me to take a TAN for no more than 750,000 dollars without additional approval, finance at the lowest rate possible, no more than three months period, uh, and that authorization will expire on December 31st this year. Karen, you've already talked to a few banks on some rates. Would you just address that quickly?
Currently I have rates between .59 percent to .79 percent. And I'm estimating I wouldn't need the TAN, we wouldn't need the TAN for more than 30 days if taxes are sent out and come due fairly quickly.
So the three-month period of time is just as a safety buffer in case some catastrophe happens, government shutdown or something?
Correct.
I move that we approve, uh, that we give Fred Moody authorization to take out a TAN without further approval.
Second bet.
For not more than 750,000 and for up to 30 days, up to a three-month period.
My second bet. Any further discussion on the motion? I have a question about the 70,000 for the school. If, if any of that's federal money, we don't have to give it up because no one can process that check.
Well, it's 440,000 approximately every month that we have to give them up.
That was just a joke. All right, is there, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, you can keep by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Um, I'd like to bring you up to speed a little bit on the Littleton Highway Garage Study Committee. If you recall, town meeting last year authorized the creation of that and established a $5,000 budget for them. The committee is made up of Selectman Gilman, Brody Toof is the chairman, Larry Jackson, former DPW highway manager, Carl Wildenburg, Jim McMahon III, Greg Wynn, Bob Green, Ed Parker, George McNamara, who's just joined the, uh, the group, Tony Alacqua, and myself. We've met about five times since June and have covered a lot of territory, uh, interviewed the staff at the Highway Garage about what they felt their needs are and what, uh, we might be able to do. I think, without getting into too, too much detail, some of the high points are that we feel as rebuilding on the site, it is preferable to looking for a new site, uh, because of the infrastructure that's already there and the fact that they're operating out of that, that location. Sizing the building, it currently is about a 10,000 square foot footprint. Looking at what the needs are to get all of the equipment undercover, uh, some of the equipment does, does remain outside now because there's not room to put undercover, and to, uh, plan for future growth with the idea that this would be a 30 to 40-year facility. The recommendation is that we increase it to about 12,240 square feet, uh, footprint. And we looked at, could we, could it coexist on the site with the existing building? And I think we came to the conclusion that it probably could not. And, uh, really that the existing building, it was not felt that it's, it's worth trying to save, uh, in that we're probably putting more money into trying to retrofit it for future use than it, than it really is, is worth. I, I do.
Could I ask a quick question? So one of the problems with the old building that unless we heat it, the snow load is too much for it?
Correct.
And heating it is sort of ridiculous because it's not insulated?
Correct.
So we can't even leave it empty and unheat it because it's okay?
Uh, the idea was that perhaps it could be used as a salt or a sand shed, uh, but without the heat melting the snow off the roof, then it would suffer potential collapse. So the idea was to move the building slightly forward to retain the ability to pile the sand in the rear of the building, uh, leaving room for a future salt shed. Jim McMahon III has done, uh, did this design, uh, you know, I dedicate gratitude to both he and Carl Wildenburg. Up on the front table here are some renderings, conceptual plans of what the building would look like, uh, both the floor plan and the elevations. Jim McMahon did this design on the screen, Carl Wildenburg did these drawings. Where can we get the drawings digitized at this point? But had not done so by tonight's meeting, so I couldn't put that up on the screen. So where we're at now is incoming DPW supervisor will be taking a first effort at putting together requests for proposals, uh, which would ask for firms to respond on a design build basis, and, uh, then would see how many firms are interested, sit down with them and decide whether we wanted to continue to talk with one or more of them. Interestingly, I think, uh, up until, uh, George McNamara's input last night, uh, the committee was pretty well settled that it should be a steel building, uh, but with George's extensive building background, he said, "Don't fully discount a wood frame building." He said steel is extremely expensive at this time, and you may be able to get just as much or more building if you want a wood frame building. The, the question is, uh, the trusses that would be necessary, I think, uh, we're looking at about 90 feet, uh, clear span. Can you do that in a wooden truss without making, uh, the elevation too high? Probably for a wood truss, you may, uh, need more pitch to the roof than, than you would have in a steel, uh, truss design. So that's something we'd be looking at and be looking at any contractors to make the recommendations. I think on a very, uh, generic basis, and, uh, you know, I'm somewhat reluctant to say it because I know everyone's going to ask me, "What do you think the cost is going to be?" And we're at the concept level only, uh, but if you take, uh, 100,000, or 100 dollars per square foot, uh, you're looking at about a 1.2 million dollar project.
Okay. Right, in terms, I'm sorry.
Just to kind of book it.
In terms of the current building, it would come down before this one we can get.
Correct.
And so what's the timeframe for?
Probably about a six-month construction period, so.
Rip down, start our building, six months.
Where would everybody work from while that was going on?
Well, those details haven't been worked out yet. Uh, we could put up a temporary Quonset hut, uh, we could lease space from, uh, other buildings in town that might have available space. And it would obviously be during the summer, so you wouldn't, you know, all the equipment could be stored outside.
Are we looking for a March decision on this?
I don't think we've made that decision yet. I don't think, uh, we're necessarily far enough along to make that decision. Hope, uh, as we'll talk about later, uh, January 20th is the deadline for the Budget Bond hearing, um, so we still have a couple of months, um, three months actually. And I think we'll, we'll try to make that decision in the next, uh, six to eight weeks, whether we think we can do something or just educate, uh, the voters at this next town meeting. All that is, is still in discussion. Certainly we want the input from, from you folks as to whether you think this is something we should move forward with this next year.
Because I think we should. If we, if we don't move forward, if we do education this year and then don't do attempting to get, um, the bond passed at this town meeting, it means we have a minimum of two more winters in that building. Whereas if we do it this year, if we move it and try to get it done this year, we're going to have one more winter in the building, but possibly not two. And if it's going to take more than one year to get it passed, which sometimes things do.
Yeah, that's true.
Then you could be talking about three more winters in that building, which is just, to me, I just see money flying out the windows every winter day.
Right. I agree.
So these plans, uh, will be here after the meeting breaks up, so if anyone wants to come up and take a look at them, they're available. And, uh, if anyone has any insight or input they'd like the committee to consider, please let me know and I'll, I'll pass it along. Uh, we're going to meet again, I think, in two weeks, so I'll try to keep, keep on schedule and move the process forward.
Anything else on your report?
Uh, yeah, um, did have a, uh, late application, uh, grant application go in last week. Became aware of a private foundation funding for pedestrian and bicycle paths, and, uh, I don't know what the project is eligible, but figured nothing ventured, nothing gained. So I quickly put together an application, we submitted it by the deadline, uh, and the, the concept is, uh, we would be asking this grantee for the maximum amount that they're allowing of 25,000 dollars. That 25 would be maxed with 30,000 dollars from, uh, New Hampshire DOT funding that has already been allocated for this project. And the project is to pick up the current railroad right-of-way recreational path at the industrial park road and, uh, remove the rails and tracks and create a rail bed as far east as we can go. And I, for the 55,000 dollars, I don't think, uh, we'll, we'll certainly get to the town line, uh, but if we could get to Reddington Street Bridge, I think that would be a, a great addition to, uh, to that downtown recreation town. So, um, I will know in a, another week or two whether the town is invited to submit a, a full application.
I had a question when I reviewed this at home. Part of the money would remove the tracks and part of the money, the other money would remove.
The ties.
The ties. So there's two separate components to, it's not all I know.
Well, I think the.
It would be all in one time.
It would be all in one time. I think that's the goal. Part of the restriction, I think, on the state money is that, um, it was earmarked for removing the rails, not so much as removing the ties, and this would help remove the ties, too.
Ex-rail less bumping into the situation.
Yes.
Especially if you're riding a bicycle. Okay. Hey, Fred, anything?
Just wanted to add, um, Chris Kermosh and the Trail Trailers planning on coming up following before Christmas, um, just to address the board and the panel's on, I guess, how, how it's proceeding. There are no exact dates or time yet, last time I spoke with them, but they're hoping, I think, to push it for 2014 as, as a start date. I've had a lot of people in businesses asking me every single day, so I, I held off because there's really no answers yet, but as of last week, you know, as Chris told me, so.
Okay. I'd like to go back to the beginning of the agenda. Chief Smith is here and we have a presentation that we would like to present at this point in time. So Chief Smith, would you like to come forward and bring your recipient with you?
Come on.
Steve, come on up.
Good to see you, sir.
See, Steve thought he was going to be here to talk about parking enforcement.
I thought I was getting a lead. Sure.
We're doing that many years.
So, um, for those of you that don't know, Steve had to resign as the primary parking enforcement officer for the town, uh, after an incident was passed, um, March. That's correct. But Steve is still retained by the town as our assistant parking enforcement officer. Uh, he's helped our new guy on a couple of occasions to, uh, try to get him, uh, I guess, aligned as far as what's going on in the street. And Steve is also an auxiliary for the police department, so he helps us out with, uh, serious motor vehicle accidents and call-outs and fires and stuff like that. But in introducing Austin, you know, I recognize the fact that Steve's put in so many years, um, to help not only the police department but our community. He's been recognized as an individual on Main Street as, as the ambassador. He walks around with all the pamphlets from the information booth and passes them out to all the tourists, and, you know, just a big asset to this community. And, um, I can't say that you're going to be missed because I know that you're going to be, uh, still part of our team and just taking a, a backseat role, but I, I want you to be recognized for the hard work that you did. So the board of selectmen and myself have put together, uh, as well as, uh, we've put together a certificate of appreciation, Steve, uh, and the certificate is awarded to Steve Jordan, auxiliary member and parking enforcement officer, in recognition of Steve Jordan's many years of valuable contributions to the Littleton Police Department and the town of Littleton as an auxiliary member of the department and the parking enforcement officer. So Steve, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks. You have any words?
No. Oh, I'm scared to death.
That's a first right there. Just want for words.
When I, when I took this job on, on February 28th, you know, 2007, I, I said, "Oh, boy, I finally get to write tickets to people that, you know, breaking the bar and everything." And my first day of writing tickets, uh, the unfortunate part was there was a funeral going on in Memphis Church and, and, you know, I think it was Tim McKinnon's daughter who got killed in a car accident. And I didn't know that, you know, when they're at a funeral, you don't write tickets, so I wrote 41 tickets. Thank God the chief was able to nip them in the back and we got rid of those. But I learned a lot from, I've worked with the police department, I learned a lot by working with the chief, I learned a lot from you, Paul, and, and I, uh, I, I'm kind of like a loss for words because I'm an emotional individual, but thank you very much.
We appreciate what you've done for the town.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And what you continue to do.
No. Thank you very much.
Steve.
Yeah.
I saw you as a crossing guard this morning.
Yeah.
Okay, we're moving to whole business, and first item is the Fire Chief, uh, Littleton Urgency Operation Plan. Did we let the police chief finish?
Oh, I'm sorry. Was it, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, he had other items.
But he can go first.
No, you go first.
No, no, that's for his fault. What do you need, Commute Patrol Grant?
Uh, the first item I have on the agenda is Littleton, uh, Operation Safe Commute Patrol Grant. Uh, this is a highway safety grant, uh, presented to us from the state of New Hampshire. It is some federal funds as well. The grant has been awarded to town of Littleton. The grant period goes from, uh, October of this year until September of next year. Uh, I believe we've been given the documentation, but Operation Safe Commute is, uh, targets individuals that are distracted, drivers texting, uh, and also during commute times, high-speed areas, uh, to try and reduce traffic fatalities and motor vehicle accidents. It's a 100% reimbursed, um, which is a good thing, and they also pay the additional, I believe, 30% in the grant for benefits. The only thing that we are not reimbursed is the fuel control. So I'm asking if the, uh, select board will vote to accept the grant for the amount of 4,680 dollars for Operation Safe Commute Patrols.
I move that we accept the grant in the amount of 4,680 dollars for the Operation Safe Commute Patrols.
My second to that motion. Any further discussion? I have a question. What is, does it actually, or what is, what's the, uh, the program actually supposed to do as they see people doing these things?
Uh, we're, it pays for the overtime for the officers and part-time officers in straight pay, and we're just looking for any offenders during the, the peak commute times, specifically focusing on road rage, on, um, texting, on speed, and other major motor vehicle violations.
And what's the timeframe? I may have missed that.
Uh, it's from October of this year until September of next year, but I believe the patrol is, uh, once a month. Uh, it's usually three hours in the morning and three hours in the afternoon, uh, but there are 12 patrol days, 12 days throughout the year that we would use this patrol. And we do it in conjunction, it's a statewide effort. So when we're doing it in Wellington, it's usually happening in Manchester and Durham and other places.
So there's specific days that.
That's correct.
The patrols are supposed to happen?
Do you have any other questions?
I don't.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, you can keep by saying aye.
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 And I asked the chief to come in, uh, through the call of last meeting, Captain Tyler came in to address the, uh, the drug issue in town, and I just wanted to give the chief an opportunity to amplify what he said or add any other, um, concerns that he might have ongoing within the community.
Well, uh, in my conversations with Selectman Brax, uh, he is correct that probably, I think it was more than July, but at least, uh, in the springtime, uh, we didn't have a problem with, and we're talking specifically about heroin in Littleton, um, that we do now. And it has, uh, expanded throughout the community. Thank God we're not at the level that St. Johnsburg is experiencing. Uh, they've always, since my employment here at the police department, have always had a problem with heroin, and it's never really made it across the border, but now it has. Uh, so we do have ongoing cases, we have ongoing drug operations involving the investigation of sale of, of heroin within this community. Those investigations take a lot of time. Uh, we do not have a full-time investigator of the police department, uh, which is something that we need to address at our level, uh, but we do have ongoing efforts. And part of the reason why there's, uh, heroin's really taken off in, in, uh, this area is primarily because of the good work that we've been doing on prescription medications and in reducing the access, the illegal access, either doctor shopping or, uh, picking up on illegal prescriptions. And of course, we have our Drug Dropbox, which I'm not saying Littleton's solving the problem for the whole state, but that's a statewide initiative and a New England-wide initiative and specifically Vermont and Maine. Uh, so as a result, uh, prescription, illegal prescription medications are harder to obtain, more expensive, heroin is cheaper, and it's coming up the I-95 corridor to this general to the New England area, and it's a lot cheaper. And as you know, it's very difficult.
Good, thank you very much, Paul. Any, any other questions here regarding this topic? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen, do you want to go back to citizens' concerns? Yeah, yeah. Mr. Warren, we had gone well beyond citizens' concerns, but we're going to go back because you just came in and.
We were so concerned.
And we, we were concerned, so do you have anything you'd like to say?
Now?
Yeah, because we have already moved past this, you know, you had to go back.
Couple of things. Number one, I want to congratulate the board, the town manager, and all of those who participated in the resolution on the more damn matter. By getting a stabilization for the next two years for 177 million dollars is no small accomplishment. And I don't know if you've had an opportunity to read, but Robert Bleckel has, and I hate to give Robert a compliment, but I actually don't hate to do it, but I'll do it anyways. If he did see today's Caledonian, uh, it kind of lays out the issues that many municipalities are facing in dealing with utilities, uh, and the only way I can kind of describe it is that there's like a three-way civil war that's going on, uh, between the towns, the utilities, and the state of New Hampshire. And for Littleton, uh, to be able to have a little bit of a two-year rest from participating in that civil war is, again, no small accomplishment. I know, uh, when, when the group was put together, the goal initially was, was to maintain this 177. It's not very often you set out to actually do something and, and it actually occurs the way you hoped it would. And you brought in the appropriate legal counsel, you brought in the technical, uh, support from George Sansucci, so you weren't just doing something on the back of an envelope. And you actually, and you brought citizen participation, you actually did the way it's supposed to work, and it worked extremely well. Uh, the, the civil war that's going out there between utilities, uh, has a lot of different mothers and fathers as to what caused it. Uh, there was a battle, uh, between the, uh, between the towns and the state when what was called the Communication Tax was passed. And what ended up happening with the Communication Tax was they heavily discounted polls in community for taxable purposes. Well, the town said, "That's not a good idea because the state gets a Communication Tax and we lose out." Well, eventually the poll tax went back in and the utilities weren't too happy about it. So that's one of them. Obviously Northern Pass has caused a lot of hot weather, uh, in, in the North Country, and the town has taken the appropriate position, uh, to oppose it because eventually, essentially there's nothing in it for us. I mean, we get the burden, uh, the out-of-state commu, uh, states get the power, and there really is nothing beneficial for us, so I mean, again, but it's that. The 83F legislation, I hope you'll be monitoring. While we've got a two-year window, uh, as Robert's story lays out, litigation is going forward. Now, what the 83F was, was when statewide property tax was passed in 1999, it was agreed that utilities should pay. that utilities should pay their fair share. But they got legislation in which heavily discounted the value. It wasn't market-oriented, it wasn't income-oriented, it was the 83F. And that was the deal. They said, "Okay, you're being taxed heavily at the local level. We still think you should participate in statewide fair tax, but we'll give you a discounted thing." They're now trying to take what they got for a concession in 1999 and try to run it statewide so that that becomes the standard. And Littleton at some point is going to, if that happens, has got to be involved sooner rather than later, because if Robert's analysis is correct, and we lose 2/3 of $177 million, we're talking some serious change. The last time we took a hit for $62 million, and this one would be 2/3 of $177. So it's important that while we've got a two-year breathing room to monitor what's going on with that lawsuit is very, very important, because if they're successful, I personally think they have an uphill challenge because the, there's no questioning what the legislation intended was to give them a concession not to be assessed at the same way that they are within the communities. For them, all of a sudden, 14 years later, say, "Oh, no, 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 that's not true. This is what all of the dam should be done." I think that they have an uphill climb. That doesn't mean they're not willing to take the fight. The other thing is that, that what happened was, what the other thing that's driving is, ever since what's called a vote decision was passed, which was done in the 90s, where income, and it was done based upon the work of George Hansusi, who's our consultant, that where income, that has dramatically increased the value of generating plants throughout the state. Well, the utilities weren't too happy about it, and this is a way of act or a way of revisiting that decision. Where the civil war comes in is that all of the legislature has to do is change 83F, and the whole problem goes wet. They can just say, "Okay, we're going to eliminate that. You're going to be taxed the way they are at the town." I'm not sure why the utilities are taking the chance that by beating up on all the small towns, they're not going to have a pushback at the legislative level, and that legislature, legislation can be changed at any time. But I guess that's for them to figure out. We're not in the middle of it. But again, I wanted to congratulate you guys for all your hard work in that, because 177 is critical on that. I have something else to talk about. Is this the appropriate time?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I know Fred and Karen possibly talked about what the potential tax implications are for the year. I got some comments. You want me to wait to do it at that point? Would that be more appropriate?
Well, I were, I was not going to bring it up unless you came. We're going to bring it up when you came. You're here. We might as well talk about it now if that's...
Okay. I'd rather follow Karen's presentation, and she'll probably answer hopefully 90% of my questions. Okay. Thank you.
Ready?
I'm sitting over here.
I got to tell you one quick story. The reason I was late was that I didn't know that it was the opera house. So I went to the community house, and I went into a meeting, and I was welcomed warmly, and they gave me a great seat. The problem was, it was a wait-watching meeting, and while I obviously qualified to attend it, I didn't figure out for a while it was a wrong meeting, so I'm sorry. I apologize.
Did they give you brownies?
Uh, no. They, they thought I was an appropriate candidate, but that was enough.
This is the small print.
I'm sorry. I tried to put so much information.
It's also on the screen, so I'll try to...
What I've handed to you is, and what's on the screen is...
Will, I'm sorry. Why did we just skip over Joe?
Uh, we're back to citizens' concerns.
Okay.
And a heads up to Mr. Warren when we talk about taxes.
Okay.
And so...
Sorry, if you can understand that. That's okay.
This is my estimated revenues, and what I did was, on this spreadsheet, I included the 2012 revised MS4, which I put on here, M4, tax rate setting revenues. This is a form that I have to go through with DRA in order to calculate out what the taxes were last year. Then I have a column that says unaudited revenues, 2012, December 30th. The audit is almost complete. I'm still waiting to see my draft, and I haven't seen that yet. Then I have estimated revenues for the proposed budget. This is what we proposed last year for revenues when we were doing the budget process. And I have estimated revised revenues. This is from an MS4 that I have to send in to DRA on September 1st. And this is just an estimate, and it gets updated frequently. And if the final update and the revised revenues are done at the tax rate setting or just before that. Then I have current year-to-date revenues as of October 15, 2013 here. And this is, the top portion of this is basically the general fund, and the lower portion is the budgeted amounts for the different special revenue funds. And then I have some adjustments, lower part here after total revenues, and I'll explain a little bit about those. But the yellow column is what we really need to look at, because this is information that we're going to use to set the tax rate. The form that I sent to DRA September 1st had $3,315,031 for estimated revenue. And that included offsetting use of fund balance according to warrant articles. It was use of capital reserve fund, trust funds, and special revenues to offset some of those warrant article expenditures. So I went through again last week and looked at my revenues and tried to see where they could be adjusted, and I do this just before tax rate setting. What I have is a insurance refund that we got from the LGC, which is now NHMA, but it's property liability insurance. We got back $24,600. I had a small factor of that already budgeted in the proposed budget, but I did not include it on the MS4 form, because at that time I had not received that money. I have cents. Then I have additional penalties and interest to be updated, and that is because I went through and did the calculation of where I see the interest and penalties to be closer to at the end of the year, and this is on property taxes. So I added $5,000 there. Then there's some additional other revenues to be added, and this number is made up of a lot of little numbers, and if that can go over a little bit further to the right, maybe we could see some of those. Just small numbers here and there that I see could be added. One of the bigger ones of that is, I found out today that the rooms of meals tax that we're going to get back for revenues is $15,269 more than I budgeted. So that's part of that $22,000. We do have a slight adjustment that reduced some of that money, which is the highway block where it's going to be $6,417 less that I planned on. We don't really get those numbers until later on in the year, so when I budget them, they're just an estimate. So in total, I'm going to be adjusting our MS4 as of right now about $45,000. Those are those four, five, no, four numbers right there.
About $45,000.
Yeah, $45,577. So the actual MS4 number as of right now that's going to be used for setting taxes is $3,360,608, which is more than what I had planned on to begin.
And it's actually more than what we have on this sheet of paper in front of us. We have the...
Oh, you have... Okay, this, I'm sorry, I missed about eight of the cents. So the next page that I give you, that's in your packet of information, is the estimated tax rate calculation. And I have the 2012 actual rates that were there. I have my estimated using the 91 MS4 form, and that was using the lower revenues, nothing for fund balance, but estimating that we'd have $150,000 that we'd need for overlay, and estimating at that time, because I didn't have the MS1 numbers, that the war service credits were going to be $176,000. And at that time, I had estimated the tax rate was going to be 7.83, which is an 84 cent increase. Now, with the new revenues that I've come up with and knowing what the war service credits are, I have an estimate of 7.77, which is a .77, 77 cent increase. And that's without using any fund balance to reduce taxes. And now this next step is what do we have for fund balance? As of the end of 2012, the unreserved fund balance was $856,604. That's over to the right. If you go to the right.
Shouldn't it be on this?
Okay?
$856,604.
Yes. Now, the audit in the MS5 shows that we have an unreserved fund balance of $1,476,905. Part of that money that's separated out, the, if you go up a little bit further on the top, you're going to see reserve for encumbrances is the $374,000. The $82,256 is reserved for abatements, for some pending abatements that were at the end of the year. The $137,151 was a number, an amount that was going to be used or voted from surplus during the town meeting vote. And then the $10,699 was prepaid bills that I had to process in 2012 that were 2013 bills. Then the other number that we really have no control over, but we have to set some money aside, is called the deeded property. And this is an accounting thing for $50,000 that we have to set money aside. So those are the reductions from that $1,476,905 that brings us to that $856,604. So...
What we have to do as selectmen is decide how much to adjust to apply to tax rate, to reduce the tax rate.
Correct.
And we'll do that by the next meeting.
And for each $100,000 that you use of the fund balance, it's going to be roughly .125, 12 and 1/2 cents to 13 cents off the tax rate.
And last year it was $175,000.
And what did we leave in the fund balance last year?
Last year you had left $507,87. It's right on this sheet.
So if we were to do the same, if we were to leave approximately the same amount, around $500,000, we would be able to use somewhere around $350,000 out of this $856 to apply for...
We could even split it.
What is the, what's the percentage?
I just did the 350, okay? And that would drop your tax rate, go from $7 to $7.31. Last year it was $7.
$7 even.
$7 even. This year it would be $7.31, using 350 of the $850.
So we use more 100, what would that...
Put 400 in there and see what that looks like.
So that's $7. So that's...
An increase of 25 cents. And I want to make one other comment to this sheet. The county tax, county portion, I have got that number, and that's actually going to be a reduction from last year.
Must be their woodchuck blade.
Or the nickel.
Yeah, a nickel. What would be...
Down in the book from last year.
It was $1.32 last year for 1,000. This year I'm estimating it to be $1.27. And when the DRA sets the tax rate, it may be a little penny rounding here and there.
So practically speaking, between the town and the county, that's only, that's going to end up being an increase of only 20 cents, right?
Depending on what the selectmen decide to do.
If we were to do that, yep.
Yes, sir.
I went to the school board and urged them to do, to be creative, and what I would urge them to do is come and meet with Karen, because she's done exactly what you should do, which is be creative, review it, and give you options so that you can make the best information for the most informed decisions. I mean, she's just done an outstanding job of dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
She's not free.
What's that?
If she's not free, we would ask her...
Well, if she could do half as much for the schools as what she's done for the town here, it's not a question of being free. It would be one of the best money we'd spend. So what she's done has just been outstanding. You know, I reviewed the overlays from previous years. 175 had been a number except during the mor dam years, and the 150 I think is a doable number. I think your experience shows it, so I think the 150 is right on it. As far as the surplus, to reduce it, $250,000 to $350,000, to use it to reduce taxes, I think that would be totally appropriate. I know in the past years, $500,000 has kind of been like the number you really don't want to get below, but it's been a workable number. One question I have for you, Karen, is that we don't, like we did during the mor dam years, one of that, we kept the overlay in a separate account, so we had some extra money when the bond came. We don't do that anymore. Is that correct?
Other than this amount that we're reserving for abatements, our auditors and the town works together to try to come up with that.
So basically, to address any abatements issue, we have 82 that we're going to roll over, and then another 150 that would be available for other abatements that've come down the road. So basically, you'd have $232,000 to address, which I think probably could be a little bit lower, but it certainly is not something too high.
Excuse me, it's not kept in a separate bank account?
I realize that, but I mean, it's kept as in a different accounting ledger as far as what the funds are there for. Question that I had was that, and I think you may have already done, you don't do it, it appears that you went through all of your encumbrances that have run their course, all of your warrant articles, that monies have been expended and then have, funds have been left over. Have those already been incorporated in some of your accounting that you did?
Not, not yet. That will come when we sit down and talk a little bit further on budget and what's left for encumbrances.
Okay. So that's something that's available to you also if you make a decision to do that. Those are additional funds, either that will be added in surplus during this year or that. So I mean, you've got some extra money there. A question that I have, the school district showed that their LGC money that they got for their share, not the employee's share, but their share, they're using it as a revenue this year to offset taxes. Has that been done here?
It has been applied as a credit, a holiday credit against the health insurance. So it's against the health insurance lines, and it's set to the selectmen if they want to use any of the monies that are left over in the appropriations to help reduce the taxes through this fund balance process.
I would urge the selectmen to take that, to use that money to reduce taxes, the LGC money. The school district has done it. I think it's only fair to the taxpayer.
Well, it reduces taxes if it reduces what we have to pay for the insurance next time around.
Well, that reduces on the expense side. That doesn't help the taxpayer, and the problem is if you do a credit this year, which not the credit, it's not a bad thing. It doesn't offset what the insurance will be to you from now, when the next year a set of taxes are up altogether.
The, if you're looking at that number, the 350 that Margie had talked about at one point...
Yep.
And add another 50,000 to it, that 50,000 is roughly what the town ended up with, that's going to end up, if it's not used for other purposes, will end up going into the fund balance at the end of this year.
I would urge that you use that 50 as a revenue to offset the taxes this year.
So if we were starting out at the beginning of this conversation with $350,000 used to offset taxes?
350 from fund balance, and another 50 from that fund balance that will fold into it at the end of the year.
That, the other 50 is that...
The other 50 is, is actually...
The revenue credit.
The credit against the expenses.
And that, so then that gets us to the $400,000 that we were just talking about. talking about? Okay.
Okay, I just, Karen did exactly and gave you the information, so you can make the most informed decisions. I think if you hit the target of twenty-five cent tax increase, I think you've done a heck of a job. When you consider that the town supported a hundred and thirty thousand one-time expense for the heat installation, that's not a reoccurring cost, but that tends to spike the tax rate. The other thing is, the hundred and twenty thousand to refurbish the fire station, there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of non-reoccurring warrant article costs that are built into this, and that, at times, tends to spike the tax rate. But with what you've come up with here, through Karen's creativity, working with Fred and the department heads, if it ends up being a twenty-five cent tax increase, I mean, that's what, three and a half to four percent? I mean, I don't think you're going to hear too many complaints on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Going down to the old business, and we're going down to, is this the fire chief?
Yes.
It is. Chief Mercer, would you like to have a seat with us? Look at that picture. Shoot.
I'm here to report on the status of the Tops Emergency Operations Plan. It's been completed, approved, adopted, and is currently being distributed to town departments as well as the SAU. Unless FEMA mandates an interim year change, emergency plan will be revised in five years. In years two, three, and four, what we would do is we would conduct an annual plan review and update the resource list and contact names and numbers, and make some adjustments to our procedures if needed. Our next step is to exercise this plan. And this is going to incorporate two types of exercise events. The first would be a tabletop exercise, which is simply, we'll call it a facilitated analysis of an emergency event that would occur here in town. It will test our multiple functions of our plan, our department's ability to take a team-based approach to solve problems, and also test our communication skills, our written protocol clause policies, and also our responses to such events. In the next week, I'll be meeting with officials from the New Hampshire Department of Homeland Security to discuss scheduling a tabletop exercise for two thousand fourteen. The tabletop exercise will be conducted and evaluated by a third-party consultant, private vendor. There will be a cost involved to conduct this exercise. Fortunately, the costs are reimbursable by grant. However, there is a stipulation in this grant requirement that the town first pays for the tabletop exercise, and then, of course, the mitigating ways for reimbursement.
You have to pass a grade to get that reimbursed?
I would think so, yes.
But we'll get a passing grade.
Right. We're researching private vendors and costs, and I will get back to Fred with that information.
Do you have a ballpark for your budget?
Not right now. No, I know.
Do you have an idea what you would like to do in terms of the exercise?
Not right now. We haven't evaluated that. We're performing a risk analysis, and we'll take a look and see what we want to do. Basically, obviously, it's going to be an event which will involve a majority of the town departments, so everyone gets to...
I know what, I know what one's going to go for. Oh, cooperation.
Yeah, that's right.
Because he likes to say that.
Like when I would say... The second exercise will be a full disaster drill, scheduled for year two thousand fifteen. Again, this would involve the participation of all the town departments and town employees. This would also be a hands-on functional drill. The drill will be conducted by a third-party vendor and evaluated, which we would get an evaluation report. Obviously, we get evaluation reports on any drills that are conducted by vendors. That's part of the process. There will be out-of-pocket costs, and there are grant opportunities to get reimbursements. However, I have to caution you that I am not sure if the full disaster drill will be one hundred percent reimbursable, and I have to research that more thoroughly.
Any questions? The full two thousand, or the full drill in two thousand fifteen, does that come as a surprise? Are you aware of the fact that it's going to happen on the day it happens?
You are, you are, yes.
And is it something like a chemical spill, something that would involve all departments, or?
Yes. It's actual, a practical type skill in which we would have set up a, an event such as a tanker truck rollover, a tanker truck spill, a, something like that, in which there'd be actual activity going on by players, if you will, people, actors, who'll be participating in different roles, whether they're injured parties or people who are providing us with information. This is all developed over time by these private contractors, and of course, they, it involves using people here, students here, whoever wants to participate, whether they want our victims, or whether they're giving us information, or whether there's another event going on to distract us. It really stresses our plan and our resources. And that way, we can evaluate how our plan worked, how we responded to the plan, and evaluates our readiness and what we may need to improve.
So because you know when this is going to happen, is there a factor that's built in to estimate what, how long it will take if you didn't know? In other words, if you didn't know, is it reduced, the amount of time that it took, is it reduced by X amount? Because you would have to somehow control for knowing versus not knowing, right, when the events are occurring.
The knowing part is knowing what, when the event is going to occur.
Presumably, you wouldn't be on a vacation at that time.
Right.
Whereas a real disaster might happen while you're gone.
Knowing somewhat what the event may be, however, there are other circumstances and what's called unplanned activities. We don't know the script. We don't know what's going to be thrown at us. In other words, we could have a chemical spill, however, we don't know the quantity, we wouldn't know the material, we wouldn't know what other events might be occurring, we just are not privy to that script. So that's how that works. We would have to react to whatever's being presented to us.
The doubt regarding full reimbursements of the two thousand fifteen exercises, is that based on past experience where you haven't received any impact that you participated?
It's based on availability of funding, and I've seen where some of the reimbursement grants have become, I would say, a little less generous, in that they may not reimburse for its food beverages, or they may not reimburse for fuel costs, for apparatus and, you know, police vehicles, and so on and so forth. We'll just have to research that, wait and see, and see where we land. We'll try to work within those parameters to try to reduce those out-of-pocket expenses as much as possible, obviously.
Any answers? Got a copy of the plan for the board presenting the bill? If there are any questions, you can go ahead and find them. Okay, so I stick this in my computer at home and update my current report?
Yep, you can delete your current report and you can replace it with that.
I'll need technical assistance to join that.
I have a question.
Brian, pop, sir.
I want to say publicly what I said to the chief a couple, I think it was a couple months ago, in the mecca of where all businesses conducted the Littleton Town Government, the parking lot of the Bank of New Hampshire. I happened to run into him, I was coming out, and I congratulated him on the grant for, I think it's two hundred and eighty-some odd thousand dollars for a new fire truck. And Karen happened to be walking by, and I said, "Chief, I believe that is the largest equipment grant the town has ever gotten." And she nodded her head and said it was. So that was one heck of, one heck of an accomplishment for the fire department, for the community, and ultimately, the taxpayers. And that doesn't happen without a lot of elbow grease. I know it took a lot longer than what was hoped, but just sticking with it really paid off. And it is, according to Karen, the largest equipment grant we've ever received, so success for the community.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome. Re-adoption, readoption of current welfare guidelines as our last item of business under old business? Fred, are you going to walk us through that?
Well, Seal is the expert on that, but really, it is a exercise to readopt what we have had as policies and procedures in the past.
We've had this for a number of years. Have you read through this?
No. You just want me to lie, did you?
No. So maybe we could spend a minute and just walk through the sections that are changing.
Welfare guidelines are reviewed by the welfare director each year. If changes to the guidelines are necessary, they are presented to the board for approval and adoption. The guidelines, these guidelines have not changed over the last three years. Welfare director recommends the board readopt the current guidelines without changes. The state guidelines for two thousand fourteen have changed for the use of EBT cards, old-age assistance, and ACEs for permanently and totally disabled. These changes at the state level will put a significant increase on the welfare budget if the guidelines are changed to allow providing assistance that was not allowed in the past. So I think we're seeing a transition, a downshifting at the state level, and we're trying to push back a little bit on that.
So do we need to make a decision about that today?
Can we, will we still have a next meeting, or can we make a decision today? I've read through this, so I didn't have any questions.
So Seal recommends readopting the same ones?
Okay. You want to make a motion?
I do. I move that we readopt our guidelines as they have been for the last several years.
I second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We're moving to new business, the two thousand fourteen town meeting calendar. We have it here in multicolored.
Here again, this is Seal's primary work product, but we certainly went around a few days trying to fit all the events and deadlines into what we think is a workable schedule and what is presented to you at this point. I guess quickly, this is broken out into monthly calendars, if I can get this, so October, we are here at the sixth beat. Yellow represents voter selectmen commitments to the best of your ability. Blue represents the budget committee meetings. So between now and the end of the month, we have one budget committee meeting next Tuesday, and then the selectmen at the end of the month on the twenty-eighth. Going into November, the fifth is the budget committee, and then on the twelfth, we have the board meeting, that's the second Tuesday of the month. And then other colors represent other key dates. So November thirteenth is the first day for voters to submit petition warrant articles to be included in the town warrant. Following week on Tuesday, we have a budget committee, and then November twenty-fifth, we have the final select board meeting for that month. We're closed on Thanksgiving Day and the day after. And then we're into December. December third and tenth are budget committee meetings. December ninth is a board meeting. December twenty-third is a board meeting, and that is one day before Christmas Eve. Two thousand fourteen, so moving into January, we have a selectmen's meeting on the thirteenth, and then the next day is the last day for voters to submit petition warrant articles to be included in the town meeting warrant. So that's an important date for voters to, to know. And then, we tried to work around having the budget bond hearing on Martin Luther King Day, but we just couldn't, couldn't see it. There were conflicts with the venue, with the school, and their calendar, so for us to provide a snow day for the bond budget hearing, we had to move that to the bond budget hearing to Monday, January twenty. Candidates can file for candidacy on January twenty-second, and then the twenty-seventh is the last date to post a warrant. And we have a board of selectmen's meeting that day. February fourth, Tuesday, we have deliberative session for the first session of town meeting. The following day is the snow date for that. And then the tenth and the twenty-fourth are selectmen's meetings. March fourth, town meeting, or annual town report must be finalized with the budget ballot questions. And then the tenth, we have a selectmen's meeting, and then the following night is town meeting day, voting at the fire station. And then the eighteenth is the last day for petition recount, and then the following week, we have a selectmen's meeting on the twenty-fourth.
And then we get to elect officers, right?
Yes, we do. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Other business, sewer tax warrant approval. Three hundred and ninety thousand six fifty-seven, two cents.
Sewer tax, this is the second issue of sewer tax. We get the cubic foot readings from the Littleton Water and Light Department. It's a calculation that we do in the computer and spits out that amount of a tax warrant. So the tax bills will be issued this week. So hopefully, we'll be getting that money coming in, and will help defray what we need to borrow and defer when we need to borrow. For the tax anticipation.
Thank you. Running water papers.
We voted, so we did those.
Oh, we did those, okay. New England Electric Transmission Corporation Assessment Agreement. Now, we're going to move into a tax assessment, so not public session.
Do that if you want, or we can do it open session. Just quickly, by, by background, this has been going on for several years, dating back to two thousand ten. There was equipment that was in New England Electric Transmission that had been mothballed but not physically removed, and this is a settlement agreement, it's something that we've been negotiating with New England Electric Transmission Corp. for several years. It's a fair agreement, and it really just reflects what happened in, in reality in the field, in that they mothballed equipment that we continued to tax for a while, so it's a recognition of, of that fact.
Okay, so we need to come out of, out of selectmen's meeting?
No, we don't need to go into, there's no reason to go into not public session.
We can do this, we can do this as part of this meeting?
It's up to you.
We could just go ahead and...
Okay, we don't, we don't need to...
I don't think so.
Okay, that's fine. The question I had, that I discussed with Fred today, is, is, you know, the adjustment is based on equipment that was actually... equipment that was actually not being used. Am I correct? It was still on the property, but apparently not being used. We didn't know that.
Are you telling the assessor did not check that out?
Did not know that. And so, it became a discussion regarding going forward anyway or not. And our decision was, recommendation was not to go forward with this, but to make the adjustment.
Right, we would, if we do not agree to this settlement, then we would go to court.
Which is going to cost us more than the settlement.
Right.
Which could easily cost us more than the settlement.
We're looking at about twenty-five thousand dollars less in revenue per year for the next two years by the settlement.
You have nothing else that you want to put up on the screen?
No.
Okay, fine. So you're looking for a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the settlement with New England Electric Transmission Corporation on the assessment over the past three years, right?
The second motion. Any further discussion?
Could I, excuse me, I'm sorry. Would you amend that to authorize me to sign the settlement agreement on behalf, please?
I move to authorize Fred Moody to sign the settlement agreement as we have...
As part of the original agreement?
Okay, so let me start over. Let me start over.
Can I say it to you back here?
No. We have enough entertainment already. So my motion is to, is to accept the assessment agreement that we've discussed on the New England Electric Transmission Corporation, and to authorize Fred Moody to sign it on our behalf.
I second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we are going into non-public session under... Yeah, I have, I have a couple items to discuss, please. Under...